Good evening and welcome to the League of Women Voters presentation of the forum for District 3. These are the candidates who are running tonight. We have all of them with us to speak about the issues that many of you have submitted questions on. We are going to record this forum. It'll be available later. And for any information about the league, you can always go to our website, L W B Ventura County dot org. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce the president of the League of Women Voters, Betsy Patterson.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Patterson. I am the current president of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. One hundred years ago, the Nineteenth Amendment was ratified, giving women across the nation the right to vote. We hold the vote to be, the right to vote to be precious, since not all people were given that right in the original constitution. And for one hundred years, the League of Women Voters has been dedicated to encouraging civic engagement and informing voters about the candidates and the issues. From its beginnings and continuing today, the league is a nonpartisan political organization which does not support or oppose any particular candidate or political party. Each of us has a voice in our government if we use our voice to vote. To be informed voters, we must ask questions of the candidates and understand the pros and cons of the ballot propositions before we cast our vote. Thank you for joining us tonight, and we hope that many of your questions are answered by the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. I'm going to go ahead and just for a moment, share a screen here for the audience. And this is the map of the districts here in Ventura. So we are having the forum tonight for District 3, which is, I'm not even going to suggest what color, sort of like a lighter orange or darker yellow. And that represents this area here in the middle, District 3, part of the Pacific View Mall, Ventura College area, Royal Verde, et cetera. So if you live in those boundaries, you will actually be voting for one of these candidates. If you don't live in those boundaries, keep in mind that these candidates still represent you. They will be voting on issues throughout the county, and they may welcome your support, even if you are not actually a member of their district. With that, we will shift back, and we will begin with our opening statements. We randomly drew numbers earlier. And William Cornell will be our first speaker, and they will have one and a half minutes. William, when you're ready.
Thank you, David. If you don't know me, or we haven't met, my name is William Cornell. I'm a local business owner here in Ventura. I have been running the business since two thousand and five, and I was a Santa Paula native originally, and I've relocated here to Ventura some years ago. The family makeup that I come from is, is, my father was a law enforcement officer. My mother was a homemaker here in town. There's quite a few siblings running around. My wife works in healthcare. She's a physician's assistant with the county. And my daughter Madeline goes to Buena High, and she's a sophomore. And Eli is in middle school at Anacapa. I'm running to try to provide a future for them that's sustainable, and not just them, but everybody else as well. That's it in a nutshell, and I'll turn over the rest of my time to the next candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Our next candidate is Barbara Brown. And you may have to unmute Barbara.
Well, thank you so much for inviting, for hosting this event. For me, this is a nostalgic moment because it reminds me when I was a young woman voting for the very first time, and I lived to the League of Women Voters to inform me. So thank you so much for this service that you provide. I'm a four-decade veteran and I'm running because I want to give back to the city that has given me so much. My husband Bert and I raised our son here, embracing that quality of life that living here provides. I served for nearly eight years as a public art commissioner, beautifying Ventura to give voice to artists, but also I worked with the Ventura Botanical Gardens, which I'm very proud of, mostly because we started with nothing, and we were able to build this amazing place to visit on the hilltop. We were able to inspire the best and brightest, but because BBG was a public-private partnership, I gained invaluable experience learning about how the city works. So I'm also the founder of a twenty-five-year-old business, and I have a broad fiscal background. I, in my business, I had to absorb a lot of information and make thoughtful strategic decisions. I'll continue to do that as your city councilperson. I hope you'll support me with your vote.
Thank you, Barbara. And Barbara, if you have a chance where your audio is a little distant, I don't know if there's anything you can do with it, but it seems a little different from when we spoke to you a couple of moments ago. We heard you just fine, but if there is anything you want to do, please go ahead. At this time, we'll move on to our next candidate, Mike Johnson.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters of Ventura County for hosting this forum. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm a high school teacher by trade. I taught U.S. history, government, and economics. I took time off to be a stay-at-home dad, and then my wife had some medical issues and became disabled, so that's been my focus. But over the past twelve years, I've become more and more involved in community issues. I was president of the Point Seti PTO for two years and served on the Anacapa School Site Council. And for ten years, I've been involved with the college area community council. I had the honor of serving as chair. And for several years now, I've been a regular at City Hall, attending nearly every meeting of the Water Commission, the Economic Development Subcommittee, the Homelessness and Affordable Housing Subcommittee, and the Measure O Oversight Committee. And now, with district elections, it's time for me to step up. District 3 deserves a council member who is ready to lead on day one. I want Ventura to be a sustainable and resilient city, a place where a young person can put down roots, where a midlife bankruptcy or a divorce doesn't end in foreclosure or eviction. The city's facing several challenges over the next four years, but each is also an opportunity to decide what our future looks like. That's why I'm running. I'd like to earn your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And we'll now move on to Erin Gaston.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, League of Women Voters. David, good seeing you again. Thanks for everyone for attending tonight, fellow candidates, all of my fellow Venturans. My name's Erin Gaston. I am Ventura native. I was born and raised down at Ventura Beach. My parents have lived in the same home for fifty-two years. And they're fortunate enough to buy that house for about thirty thousand dollars, which I know we, none of us have seen that in a long time. I am a product of the Ventura Unified School District. I went to Pierpont School, Sheridan Way, Cabrillo Elementary, Cabrillo Middle School, Ventura High School, where I had some of the same coaches and teachers that my parents did, which I'm very proud of. Ventura College, and then off to UCSB, where I started a technology company with a business partner, and we developed and sold products for people with disabilities to access computers, communicate, and live independent lives. I retired from that business after about thirty years. We had that located right here in Midtown Ventura. And after I retired from that, I started doing real estate with my mother Grace, and she's been a Realtor, a local Realtor here for about thirty-two years. I'm running for city council because I want my children to have the same opportunities that my parents did, that I had, my brother had, and my grandparents before us, the Ventura gave all of us. So I hope I earn your support. Reach out to me if you have any questions on my website, ErinGaston.com. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll begin our questions. Candidates, you'll have a minute and a half. Mike, we're going to start with you. The first question is, who's going to win tonight's Laker game? Do you have an answer for us? I guess. Okay, let me try that again. Mike, the question we want to start with is homelessness. Please share with us what your solutions would be to homelessness. Looks like we might have lost Mike, actually. Maybe I know my joke was bad, but I don't think it chased him away. So we'll wait a moment, see if he reconnects, but we'll just move on to William. Same question to you. Tell us what your plans are to deal with the homeless situation in Ventura.
So I think it's a, it's actually a multi-level answer to that question. We do need to work with mental health here in town and supply them the tools that they need to come to the, to the challenge that's facing us. The housing authority's been quite a help so far as a partner with the city to, to solve some of the problems that we've had. There is a component of law enforcement that I think we need to address with the homeless vagrants on the street. There are quite a few obstacles in our way that have been posed by, by the state of California, but I think we need to challenge some of those and try to bring a little more law and order into those communities, not just to protect the citizens, but to protect the people that are living on the street against predators amongst themselves. There isn't really a short answer that doesn't involve money, however, and I think that the city needs to be equipped to be able to handle that. And I think that raising taxes is the last thing that any of us, they're running for office, want to do. So I think that we need to work on our, our tax base.
Thank you. Erin, same question to you. What are your policies to address the homeless situation?
Sure. Thanks, David. I think the first thing I should point out is I think Ventura is going down the right direction with the Arch twenty-four-seven homeless shelter. I think that all of us in Ventura should be very proud that Ventura has done that. I'd also like to see the rest of the cities in the county follow suit and take some responsibility as well to help the, these people that are in need. Actually, I have a lot of friends from high school, not a lot, thank God, but several friends from high school that are actually homeless here in town, and it breaks my heart every time that I see them on the streets. Many of these families have all the resources to help these individuals, but it's drug addiction and mental health that keeps them on the streets. And it's really sad, and I want to reach out to these people. I'd like to broaden the Arch program. My father-in-law used to work in that building, so I know there's a lot of square footage that's unused currently. And I'd like to see what we can do to keep growing that facility. And then also the mental health crisis that we have in town, we all need to address that. Whether that's putting more mental health professionals with Ventura PD, I think that's a good start to diffuse situations. And then we have the vagrancy problem. I own two commercial buildings where my whole life savings is in Midtown, my two commercial buildings where my businesses were. And we've had break-ins and other stuff from homeless or vagrancy. So it's a, it's a big problem that we all need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll wrap up this question with you, Barbara, as far as your plans and policies you would advocate for to deal with the homelessness, homeless situation.
Well, homelessness continues to be an issue. My son, this problem more often than not lands on the shoulders of our first responders. Doesn't belong there. We need a multi-pronged approach, including a collective of resources, state government, nonprofits, faith-based groups, and businesses. We were able to build Arch, the fifty-five-bed shelter, and now we have the next, we need the next level of transitional housing. The state's room key worked well, but now Home Key has been funded with six hundred million dollars to provide permanent housing countywide. Ventura is safe and clean, and Family Reconnect, and our ambassadors programs, the Housing Authority, all these groups are working very hard, making inroads into solving this problem. But it'll take daily attention and engagement with this county's behavior and health system to resolve these issues. I worked for nearly twelve years on the Board of Interface Children and Family Services, Ventura County's most comprehensive provider of social services. Which provides educational vocational training for economic, I learned so much. I believe in bending down on one knee to lift other up.
Thank you. Mike, welcome back. So we are on the first question. We'll give you an opportunity to answer this as well. So what specific policies and actions would you take if elected to deal with the homeless situation in Ventura?
Well, you know, as Erin said, I heard part of his, the Arch is a great start, but you know, fifty-five beds is not nearly enough for a city that has five hundred and fifty at least unhoused residents. And so what we've got to do, we've really got to bring in affordable housing. We're talking about affordable housing at the extremely low level so that the people that are in the Arch can move on to housing. But it's also critical that we have permanent supportive housing for people who are disabled, and we also need to work on mental health beds. So to do this, really what we're talking about is needing coordination with the county, as well as all the other cities in the county, to make sure that we can provide these services, because we know that in the aggregate, it's cheaper to take care of people and give them housing when they need it than it is to help them when they, you know, call nine-one-one because they have a medical emergency. So I think that answered the question. I apologize for having to duck off and change devices. Thank you.
That's okay. Candidates, we're going to move on to the next question. Barbara, you'll be first on this one. Let's stay with housing and homelessness in the sense that there is a shortage of housing in Ventura, much like the county and the state. What are your specific plans and views regarding density or infill, protecting open space, and dealing with the infrastructure issues like a lack of water or more traffic? So Barbara, share with us your thoughts about dealing with the housing needs.
Oh, yeah. So we need affordable housing, very low, two percent vacancy rate before the fire, plus six hundred structures. We have RENA, the Regional Housing Discussion Mandates from the state, but it looks like we're more than halfway to meeting those goals. So I believe in infill rather than hillsides, or using our precious agricultural resources. I believe in revitalizing the buildings we already have, like those on Thomas, on Thompson, or creating more work-life opportunities. The mall has a lot of potential if we can engage Masrich in embracing our vision. So Masrich is the owner. Most interns that I know want to preserve and enhance the characteristics of our city. They want affordable housing so our children can live here. They want the new projects to enhance our city. That's what I, important for new projects to follow the guidelines that we already have in place and not allow like fewer parking places or new units. I'm about quality of life, and there's no quality of life if you have to drive around after a long day of work to find a parking space. That creates neighbor-to-neighbor friction, a sense of very high density, and a street full of cars just doesn't look good. But more than that, it's not safe for our bike riders, for our moms with strollers, for our little children, and for our seniors.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Erin. And for the other candidates, thank you for muting when you are not speaking. That helps out. Erin, same question to you about your thoughts about increasing housing and in Ventura.
Sure. So as a Realtor, I have a front-seat position on our housing crisis, and we're desperate need of housing. The Ventura people have spoken loud and clear and overwhelmingly passed the renewal of SOAR till 2050. So I would never be in for a sprawl. Sprawl's out of the question. I definitely am for infill. I think we're seeing some of those new projects come online now. I would consider, you know, infill is really the way to go right now, because we can get people biking, skateboarding, walking to work. A lot of people due to COVID are permanently now working from home. This is a great opportunity for us to reduce traffic, do a lot more infill developments. And then I would like to look at doing some rezoning. We have Johnson Drive that is ready for a little revamp, and we could put some mixed use over there. Also, I'd like to look at the mall. Ventura Pacific View Mall is begging for a facelift, a renewal, and that's right in our district. I like to see some mixed-use development there would be fantastic. Again, people could bike, walk, and skateboard or whatever to work. And then, you know, we can talk about doing some annexing of the far west end back into the city and see what we can do, do a little bit of development there. But again, not sprawl, just smart, thoughtful growth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. William, same question to you as far as your views about increasing housing and also dealing with the issues that come with that as far as water, traffic, infrastructure.
So I mentioned this before in a forum previously. I served as a commissioner with the Housing Authority for four years. The issue that we're faced by the city and by the state, I'm sorry, is that they want to see a five thousand units or the ability for developers to come in and build five thousand units. However, we have ten thousand people on the waiting list with the Housing Authority. And that's not ten thousand people. I'm sorry, that's ten thousand families. They're already here using our, our water. So the, the use of water or the increase of water really is a moot point. We do need to work on developing our infill, and Erin is correct. We need to look at our zoning laws and try to utilize the space that we have to make this a richer community and a place where entry-level housing is, is available. One of the things that we'd like to do with my group is look at using an owner-occupant rules for new development CCNRs. We've seen that in other cities work. Ojai has one in a few of their new communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, we'll wrap up with you on this question. You can unmute first, and then we'll start the timer.
There we go. I apologize. I've never used an iPad for this before. So I heard a lot of great ideas. I too believe in infill. I really would protect our open spaces and wouldn't be annexing the property for, for that. But as Bill said, you know, trying to come up with five thousand locations for affordable units is, is going to be difficult. That's going to be part of the housing element that we need to submit to the state in October of two thousand and twenty-one. And unfortunately, our current housing element is not very good. Council really needs to make sure that we take that seriously. It needs oversight by the council, and it needs public input. It's really going to be the framework for the general plan that we'll be finishing in two thousand and twenty-three, we hope. One of the things we can do to address the questions of more traffic, as part of the general plan, will need to adopt a mobility plan. And council really needs to make sure that the mobility plan and the housing elements sync up so that where we are putting new housing, we have the infrastructure for people to get around town without necessarily needing every adult needing their own car. Something else we can do, you know, we have some pretty flexible zoning regulations in our commercial zones and C1 zone in particular. We need to keep that, but we also really should consider an overlay zone where we would just carve out parts of the map and make it easier for people to come in and build affordable housing in those locations. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin our next question. Erin, you'll be first for this next question. Want to get your views on a couple of things related to the environment. So what is your position on changing the open space zoning designations to allow zoning that permits building of homes in certain areas? And along the environmental question, what are your views about climate change and what you think Ventura should do to adapt to climate change?
Yeah, so the open space, I, you know, I love Ventura dearly. I'd never want to see it change from the small town that I grew up in and my parents grew up in as well. And, you know, is there room for spots for low-income housing and some senior housing within areas, possibly within SOAR? That, that may be a possibility. I think that we actually need to look at that as a city if we can't find other places to build. As far as the environment, you know, I grew up at the beach, so, and I, my parents still live at the beach, so, you know, that's a, that's a big concern. You see the, the effects of climate, climate change. When I was a kid, you'd get the seawater coming over the wall near my parents' house every, I don't know, five to ten years. It comes down the street several times a year during the, the storms. So do I think that's an effect of climate change? I absolutely do. I think that we always need to think locally to affect the globe on all things. I've owned electric cars since two thousand and thirteen. I believe in renewable energy. I come from a tech background, so I kind of nerd out on technology and new things. So, you know, I'm all for Ventura investing in clean energy and doing what we can at a local level.
Thank you. Mike, you're up next. Same question to you about your views on changing open space zoning designations and dealing with climate change.
I'm all in favor of keeping our open spaces open. I did support SOAR. In terms of climate change, you know, we've got to mitigate the effects of climate change. The biggest place where we're seeing that impact right now is down at the promenade. We started the managed retreat program. We finished Phase One. It was a huge success. It was a national model. And in part because it was such a success, it's freed up grant funding for Phase Two. So what we can do is we can retreat from the, the water so that we don't lose the bike path, we don't lose the promenade to rising sea levels. But also, you know, it's, it's critical as a city, we've got to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And the way to do that, again, I've, I've mentioned the mobility plan several times. It's not enough for people to just start driving electric cars. It's going to take thirty or forty or fifty years, really, for the current fleet of cars to be replaced with electric cars. I drive a Toyota, and I, I plan to drive it into the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Barbara. Your views about changing the open space zoning designations to permit more building, and your views on climate change?
So right after we were married, my husband and I would drive to Ojai to hike, and that really didn't make much sense from a carbon footprint standpoint. So I always imagined open spaces gracing the shoulders of our hillside, and that's why I worked on our first non-taxpayer, community-funded open space. I supported SOAR. I support the Ventura Land Trust, and I support the work of the Ranches and Way to Ventura Conservancy Trust. We want to maintain high-quality water and reduce waste, eliminate one-time-use plastics, renew our urban forces, and create a more bikeable, walkable community. Additionally, over the last two years, I worked on the bipartisan federal climate change initiative, the Carbon Fee and Dividend Legislation, H R seven-six-three, co-sponsored by Salud Carbahal. We need a climate change action plan in our general plan, and we need to address sea level rise and resiliency. My husband and I felt this very closely, and we were called among the first refugees of climate change because we lost our home in the Thomas fires. But now it's time to think ahead. We were interested in getting gray water into our rebuild. That would be the next step in things that we can do to save water and create a safer community.
Thank you. And William, we'll wrap up this question with you. Position on changing the open space zoning designation and dealing with climate change?
I, I think that we should look into easing some of the restrictions on our open space. I think that if we did some infrastructure development in our canyons, it would serve as a buffer for wildfires and limit the exposure to the, the danger of, of another incident like the Thomas fire that we had here just a few years ago. I think that if we did some easing of the open space zoning, we could incorporate hiking trails, we could incorporate some housing developments in those, in the canyons. But again, I, I don't think it's a, it would be a blanket lifting of our, our zoning in those areas, but I think we should look at some easing. When it comes to the climate change. Now, our Title XXIV laws have come a long way, and our new building requirements, and Barbara's probably seen this in her, in her house rebuild, they're, they're really drastic. They are, they're very important, and they make our homes very, very efficient. I think that really planning ahead like we have at the state level for our construction techniques has really come a long way, but it needs to go farther. And there's no reason why the local municipality.
There, William. Thank you. So candidates, I'm going to ask your permission if we can just switch over to doing one-minute answers. We have a lot of great questions. I've tried to get a few of these in for one minute, and then if we can, we'll go back to a minute and a half. So William, we're going to start the next question with you. It's been brought up as far as the Pacific View Mall. Let's talk a little bit about any particular plans or visions that you might have for the Pacific View Mall in particular. What about the Sears Building?
We've seen across the local region, the re-envision of the, of the open-air mall and the closed malls, and they've, they've incorporated housing and business in those areas, and, and they've taken the the idea from what malls were originally supposed to be. the idea from what malls were originally supposed to be, a, a place for community. They turned into just a retail spot, unfortunately. I think the return to community base is really a good direction for us to go. But ultimately, it's going to be up to the business owners, the property owners, to make those decisions. As far as city council is concerned, I think that our blessing should go in the direction of a community-based development.
Thank you. And we'll go to Barbara next. Your thoughts about re-imagining the Pacific View Mall and the Sears Building?
Well, the first step would be engaging the owners in this, the management company. It's their property, but because of my marketing background, I know that companies are very interested in what the community wants. They want to provide services based on what the community is interested in. So for me, um, you know, having built the Ventura Botanical Gardens, one of the things that we did is we engaged in charrettes, which means we had events where the community would come out and talk about what they wanted to see. I see walkways and bikeways and open spaces and work, live and plants and just a beautiful community space, public art. I see an opportunity for something really good here.
Thank you. And Mike, let's hear your thoughts about the Pacific View Mall, how that might be adapted, and also the Sears Building in particular.
Well, clearly in Ventura, what we have right now, the mall is just a symptom of the fact that like a lot of places, our commercial and our residential balance is, is out of whack. We have a housing shortage and we've got a surplus of, of retail. And so like everybody else here tonight, I'd like to see housing at the mall. It is going to require some creativity. Unfortunately, the mall's owner Mesa Rich have not been real cooperative with the city in the last couple of years as we tried to reach out. But the city really should do everything it can to facilitate something. And one of the ways to do this will be through the economic development strategy, which will be part of the general plan in 2023. I've been going to the Economic Development Subcommittee meetings for years and I'd really like to see the role for that subcommittee better defined so that the subcommittee can direct staff to work on something like this.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up this question with Aaron.
Well, first, I think that the Ventura Pacific View Mall is quite an opportunity for, for everyone, including the, the owners. And I know that a year ago, they weren't so keen on the idea of any type of redevelopment. In fact, they kind of pushed back on it. But I think maybe their tune might have changed with COVID. And looking at it, you know, when I was a kid, we used to go to that, our mall all the time to go skateboarding on Sundays because it was an outdoor mall and it was closed. And isn't it strange that we're going back to that now? We're looking at these outdoor mall opportunities. And you know, I envisioned that of being a mixed-use place with some places for families to hang out, some playgrounds, some open spaces, gardens, shops, a mini collection, like they have an Oxnard, but better, 100 times better. A Ventura way that we would do it. A place that we can, again, bike to. We already have the transit center there. It's just an opportunity that I think that we really, as a city council, need to try to work on. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, we'll start the next question with you. Tell us about your position on supporting the Ventura libraries and how that can be handled best in Ventura. And also your commitment to using Measure O funds for the libraries?
Sure. So you know, in this last budget, a lot of the library funding got shifted to Measure O. That's a, that's a great use for the, both the Hill Library and the Avenue Library. I think long-term, what we really need to do, we need to look at having an actual line item for the libraries. We've talked about that before, especially through Friends of the Library. Thank you.
Okay. And next up is William, your view on supporting the libraries and about the use of Measure O funds for the libraries?
So supporting our local libraries, was Measure O funds supposed to be used in that manner? I mean, I, I really need to do a little bit more research on that myself. I think that there can be a lot done to support our local libraries. In fact, I envision an area here where we redefine what the library is. I mean, there was a, a great bookstore here in town and it had a coffee shop in it. And it had a place where people would go and gather and hang out and have lunch. I, I know that's not going to happen anytime soon, but we could move in those directions and actually create a place that people gather. It's, it's a small dream of mine. That's really it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Aaron, your position on libraries and funding for the libraries?
So I think it's a great use for Measure O, first of all. In my previous career in the assistive technology industry, helping people with disabilities, I spent a lot of time in libraries all over the state and actually all over the country because we would put devices in those libraries because it's a public place and we need computers that are accessible to everyone, whether they had a low, low vision or blind or they had a physical disability or they just needed some help accessing the computer. So I spent a lot of time, what I learned from all that experience inside of a library is it's a, it is a community place. People come there to use the internet, to gather. Most libraries have conference rooms that local businesses come and rent out or can use free of charge in most, most cases, and they use those facilities. So if you spend some time in the libraries, it's, it's, it's an amazing to see the, the transformation that libraries already have done. It's not the typical library that we all grew up with. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Barbara will wrap up with you on your position about supporting libraries and the funding to do that.
Yes, I also agree with Measure O. I think libraries are a very, very important part of our education system for our children. When I was a little kid, I spent a lot of time in the libraries and I took my son to the library every Saturday. I think, and it's been mentioned before, that, that we really do need to reimagine libraries. There are a lot of model libraries that bring in things like retail so that you can purchase books or purchase materials relative to reading, where you can have a gathering place where authors would come and speak. Those are all the things that we, we need to do to reimagine where our libraries could be. There's a great library in Denver that's a wonderful example of bringing public art into, active public art into the library.
Thank you. Barbara, we'll start the next question with you and give you a chance here to tell us a little bit about yourself and your priorities. So tell us what would be your priorities if you were elected? And also share with us what you think separates you or is a different characteristic from your opponents. So what separates you from your opponents and what would be some of your priorities?
Well, the thing that separates me the most from my opponents is that I have experience. I've actually worked with the city in a multitude of ways. First, with the building of the botanical gardens. People, I think, don't really realize how complex the city is in, you know, all the regulations and requirements and how the city departments work with each other. I also worked on the Public Art Commission, which I, I honestly, I learned a lot more about water than I did about public art on that commission. Beyond that, as a business owner, you learn how to work with the city. So I have a lot of experience working with the city and I, I know how to do that. The other thing you asked was what were my three priorities, two of which we've already talked about. And one is homelessness, the environment, and the last one's COVID.
Okay, thank you. And Aaron, we'll go to you next. Tell us about what you think separates you from your opponents and also what some of your priorities would be.
I think we need a business leader in city council. I have the experience. I ran multiple businesses for the last 30 years. Also somebody that can negotiate. I'm in the top 1% of Realtors for Berkshire Hathaway in the entire country. You don't get that very easily, that recognition without being very good at communication and negotiation, bringing people to the table, getting people to see eye to eye and making things happen. So I have that experience. It's proven in my career. My priorities, my priorities are the economy, having a place for my children to buy a house to work. You know, everyone talks about the employers of Ventura. The first two that come to mind are Trade Desk and Patagonia. Why don't we have more of those? Let's figure that out. Let's get more, more Patagonias, more Trade Desks into Ventura. And of course, public safety. I'm proud to be endorsed by Fire and Police. That really means a lot to me and I'll do everything I can to make sure we have a healthy environment.
Thank you. William, same question to you. Some of your priorities and what you think separates you from your opponents?
So the question about my experience with the city, I, I am a business owner here in town. I also worked as a building inspector in Ojai and in the city of Colita. I have worked with multiple or local municipalities. And I think that knowing how business is done and working with the community on both sides of the counter is, is an asset. I think that a couple of the first things that I'd really like to do if I was elected as city council for District 3 is try to bring to the ballot term limits for our fellow candidates and our future candidates. And I'd like to see the Father Sarah statue issue brought to the ballot so that the city can actually have a voice on what they want their representation at City Hall to be. That's it. Thank you.
And Mike, we'll wrap up with you on this question. What do you think separates you from your opponents? And what would be some of your priorities?
Well, first, just so everybody understands, we do have term limits for the city council. We adopted them a couple of years ago, so they haven't really taken effect yet. But any of us who is elected will be subject to a limit of only three terms, 12 years. My priorities for the city, we've got to do something about the housing crisis. We need both affordable and market rate housing. And we really need to streamline the development review process. And we need to make sure that it fits well with the state legislation like SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. As I mentioned before, we've got to address homelessness and we should do that largely through affordable housing, but also working with the faith community and the county and the other cities around the county. And then water, we've got to make sure that we have a clean and safe water supply. I think what separates me from the other candidates is, you know, for 10 years, I've been involved with the College Area Community Council. So I'm very familiar with the neighborhood and our unique concerns, but I've also been very active in citywide issues for several years now.
Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and switch us back to a minute and a half so that you can give thoughtful answers to this next question. Aaron, you're up first this time. And this has been talked about before and I want to let the viewers learn a little more about your philosophy, but it's dealing with racial inequality, the Black Lives Matter movement, the systemic racism that might be out there. So of course, we're all against racism and inequality. But what are some of the things where you think you can make a difference? What do you bring to this issue? And where do you think changes should happen?
Sure. I think change needs to happen everywhere, to be quite frank. I, I kind of think of myself as a lifelong learner. I'm married to a Hispanic woman that grew up in Port Juaniemi in her grandparents' house. And I learn every day the difference between me growing up here at the beach and her growing up in the situations that she did. I have two daughters that are young adults, 20 and 18. I see the difference between them growing up now and myself growing up in the 80s and 90s. So I love to listen and learn. I'm learning every day from my daughters. My one daughter is up at UCSB as a Feminist Studies major, so we talk about those issues and stuff that she's learning about every, every day. I think what we can do is we can look at, pick things like hiring practices throughout, not only the city, but just in general, locally. So let's talk about the Ventura PD. So we need to have a, the police department needs to be a makeup of our community, right? So we need to have more females, more diverse hiring practices. So I think that's where we can start. I'd like to see that everywhere on city level, but also just promoting it within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to you, Barbara, next. Your views about inequality, systemic racism, things that we can actually do to improve the situation and all Black Lives Matter?
Well, I am profoundly concerned about systemic racism. I, I, you know, I feel for those families who are living under that kind of oppression. And I feel like we need to do whatever we can to help them out, including providing training for our police officers. And I know that that's already in process and I'm really proud of Ventura PD for getting out in front of that. I, with regard to diversity, my business was a fairly small business. I think we got up to maybe 10 employees, but it was a very diverse group. So I hired from the LGBTQ community. We had a lot of racial differences, diversity. We had women, we had young men. So I was able to bring that into what I did daily. And I think that's what's important, that if we, if we believe in doing the right thing, we should do the right thing. We should encourage others to do the right thing. And we should try to educate as much as possible whenever we see racial instances occur.
Thank you. And William, please share with us your thoughts about dealing with racism, your position on Black Lives Matter, what you think we can do to eliminate systemic racism?
So I, I think the, the Black Lives Matter movement has really brought the issue forward to a good, a good place. We're having this conversation now. I think it's going to be our responsibility as city council to insist that our law enforcement has the proper tools and the training in, in order to meet this on the streets and in their, in their own ranks. It, it doesn't stop with law enforcement. It's also in our healthcare. It's, it's an issue that we need to be visual of constantly. Minorities don't see the same kind of healthcare results that, that everybody else, that other people do. I think that when we stop having this conversation, we do a disservice to our public. And I think that only good can come out of what we do moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up this question with Mike.
Well, thank you. I support Black Lives Matter and, and I see my role as listening. Pardon me, I forgot the phone there. So we have, uh, obviously the police department. I had not heard of any incidents that, that gave me pause until just a few months ago. And I think really that was because of the Black Lives Matter movement becoming more prominent because it became something we were talking about. And it does give me some pause. We, I would like to see more diversity in the police department. And we also need to think about how the training is set up that they go through with the county that we don't really have, pardon me, we don't really have control over how the training of our police officers go. It's through the, through the county. I like that Chief Schindler is setting up a civilian advisory board. But also, it's, it's more than just policing. It really is. We also need to be talking about environmental justice. Something we see here in the city, we have a lot of aging oil infrastructure on the west side. And we need to give that the same sort of priority we would give it in any other neighborhood. And then also throughout the city, when we look at capital improvement projects, we need to be thinking about which neighborhoods are going to be affected. Whether we're talking about issues like air pollution from an increase in traffic or if we're talking about something like the urban forest and the benefits of tree canopy. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, candidates, this concludes the questions that we've handled. And now we're going to move on to our closing statements. We are reversing the order from the beginning. So the first closing statement will be Aaron Gaston.
Thank you, David. Really appreciate it. First, I'd like to actually thank my fellow candidates. You know, all of this is a, is a tough road. You feel like you're doing this all on your own. So you know, we should all be applying ourselves for stepping up and actually doing this because we all have it in our hearts to do the right thing. We all love our community. And listen, this is a thankless job. We're doing this truly from the bottom of our hearts. And for those of you that you're watching, I hope that you consider me when you vote November 3rd. The College District doesn't have a representative right now. I want to be your voice on city council. I am always a phone call away at 805-243-6. Uh I am always a phone call away at eight oh five two four three six, or two four two sixty-three forty-eight or eringaston.com. And if you want to know more about my issues, just reach out and have a conversation with me. I always find either meeting in person, a little tough with COVID, or just a phone call is the best way to get to know someone. So um I thank everyone for their time and uh if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Mike Johnson.
Well, you know, with the pandemic, with the budget crunch, the housing crisis, the rise in homelessness and the water shortage, city council really has its work cut out for it. But we have a golden opportunity here to decide what we're going to look like in twenty or thirty years. As we come out of the recession, we're going to have the opportunity to reconsider our budget priorities. And when we submit our housing element to the state in twenty twenty-one, we'll have the opportunity to really make a commitment to bringing affordable housing to the city. When we update our general plan in twenty twenty-three, we'll have the opportunity to create that active mobility plan so that we can make sure that we don't make traffic a nightmare, that we're not all spending too much of our lives in our cars. So that we can be a city where people can live and work, where you could ride your bike downtown to have coffee with your friends. And we'll have the opportunity to develop a forward-thinking economic development strategy to make sure that we keep our jobs and housing in balance. And we'll have the opportunity to adopt a climate action plan to make sure that we can mitigate the effects of climate change while reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. So over the past dozen years, I've learned just how complicated these issues are and there are no easy answers. But we really have an opportunity here and I'd like to get to work. So please visit mikeforventura.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Barbara Brown.
This is a beautiful city and I am so proud to be a part of it. I really do want to give back to the community I love. I know it takes a significant amount of time to be a city council person and I'm committed to that. I have a proven track record of experience and collaboration, being in the private sector, working as a commissioner, working within the public-private partnership. I've worked through city processes and grading and requirements and permitting and feasibility. I believe that Venturaans care about Ventura and they want it to continue to get better. They want new buildings to improve and enhance our communities, not decrease the quality here. That's why I'm running on quality of life. Pre-COVID, we had a robust small business community that I feel often gets short shrift because we can do a great job helping our businesses recover and grow. We have some of the best homegrown companies like Patagonia and the Trade Desk, but we need to create programs and opportunities for our small business owners to thrive. As your representative, it's my goal to be accessible. I want to hear from the community because that's how I know what your vision is. I'm committed to advocating for what's right for Ventura's quality of life, including clean and safe sidewalks, well-maintained streets, beautiful parks, clean beaches and safe bike and walking paths. I believe in Ventura's quality of life and I hope you'll support me with your vote.
Thank you. And our next candidate is William Cornell.
Thanks, David, for having us tonight. I really appreciate it. Erin, thank you for your comments. They were really nice. As, as, hopefully as your candidate for District Three, I, I, I really want to help maintain the way the city, the direction the city is moving. Uh the, the cost of living is constantly climbing and I think that it's up to us to actually try to curb some of those costs. And we can do it. The uh ability to work with the business community and ask the residents to, to take part in leadership, just giving us ideas is helpful. And we need to open up a platform and encourage people to come forward with ideas. Our um small business area, business district in the downtown, they're, they're innovating. They're creating new areas for customers to come to. We need to encourage that. I think that we need to get out of their way and let them continue to uh spawn these great ideas. Um ultimately, you know, this city is whatever we want to make it. And I think that we have the power and any of these candidates here, my associate candidates, we all have great ideas. And um we have a good uh run for the rest of the season and I'll see you guys at the next debate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, candidates, I'm sorry that we don't have a live audience to give you a well-deserved round of applause. Appreciate your time answering all these questions and running for office. Before we go, we have a special presentation for, from the League. And I'd also like to take this time to thank the, some members of our team who have helped put this together. Pat Essick is the head of our voter services at the League of Women Voters. None of this happens without Pat. And then we have Betsy, who you met earlier as the president. Maddie and Elizabeth were also helping as well tonight. So thank you to all of them. So now stand by here while I switch and I bring up a screen and trying to master the world of Zoom. And what we'd like to do is tell you from the League of Women Voters to make sure you plan your vote. So there are multiple ways to vote this election. The ballots will be mailed to all registered voters. You can return those ballots via the mailbox or set ballot drop boxes, or you can go to one of the vote centers and drop it off. And those vote centers are a little different than the old polling stations you may remember, where you had to go to one station near your home. These days, you'll be able to go to any vote center in the county and give them your name and address. And you can actually vote there if you are not sending in a mail-in ballot. So with that, make sure that you get them returned early. The ballot drop boxes are safe and convenient as well. Now, as far as planning your vote, there are certain dates you should be aware of. Around October second, ballots will be mailed to all voters. The drop box is open soon after. And then if you do not receive a ballot by October sixteenth, contact the elections division to make sure that they get you one. The last day to register is October nineteenth and to receive your ballot by mail. The League of Women Voters encourages you to look at October twentieth as the deadline to return your ballot by mail. If you can get it into the mail by then, it should safely be received and timed to be counted. Now, there are rules this year that extend the voting period so that if your ballot is postmarked, all ballots must be postmarked by election day. But if it's received after that day, up until about ten, well seventeen days later, it'll still be counted. So keep in mind, when you're thinking about election results on the night of the election, it may take several days or many days until we have actual results. So keep that in mind. There are resources for you if you wish to track your ballot. Every ballot has a unique ID and you can visit the Secretary of State's website and look at whereismyballot.sos.ca.gov. And that'll tell you if your ballot is in the mail, has it been received by elections, so you can make sure that your vote will be counted. The Voters Edge website is also an extremely valuable resource. Votersedge.org slash C A. We put in your address and it'll show you who's running in your area. It may have information about those candidates and much more information on the ballot proposition. So from all of us at the League of Women Voters, thank you very much. Stop sharing here. Return us to our candidates. Thank you for voting. Make sure you sign your mail-in ballot. If you are returning a mail-in ballot, it must be signed. So please make sure you remember to do that. With that, I'd like to say once again, thank you to our candidates. We will have our next forum for District Seven beginning at eight P M. Candidates, thank you and good night to all.